That's fine.
Oh, sorry, uh, the minutes.
The minutes.
Yeah, which set, can you pick out the 13th?
January 13th.
January 13th, I think. We're good. So I'll move that we accept a January 13th as submitted.
Okay, drive a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No's.
You going to do January 27th?
Sure, we can do the 27th.
The reason I'm bringing it up is because, uh, on page two, um, a paragraph that says, second from bottom, says that if the legislature, I think, I think it meant the legislation had been written in the opposite adding and the butters to the parcel, it would have been clear that the easement holders go with the butters. I think it meant the easement holders would go with the, if they reversed it, so that it was, uh, the butters.
Would notify the easement holders.
The easement holders and the butters, then easement holders would have gone with the applicant property.
Okay.
So, it's kind of minor, but I was trying to make the point that if they reversed it, it would have been clear that the butters were separate from.
The minutes are already in that one?
So the, the minutes, uh, I'd like to adjust them so instead of saying holders go with the butters, it goes with the, uh.
The holders goes with the easement holders?
With the, uh, the, uh, the easement holders go with the applicant.
Okay.
Which I think is, was the intent, but it wasn't clear. I was making the point that if they reversed it, it wouldn't be clear.
All those, uh, favor the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Any votes, you know, I was having, um, what she carries. Okay, we'll have our first hearing, which is five engines and heard to Third Street. Come forward. Taxman view four lot 141, this is a continuation from January 13th, 2022 of a public hearing regarding the applicant seeks an appeal for administrative decision, special exception required variances so that the applicants can demolish or rebuild their single family home in approximately the same location. The applicants appeal the administrative decision regarding article 301 section 301D of the town of Kingston Zone Order, whereby the building inspector denied the building permit. Furthermore, the applicant seek a special exception to the terms of article 205 section 205/7 of the town of Kingston's stolen protection district zone orders to permit the construction of a 1,540 square foot single family residence in the same approximate footprint as the existing residence and install a new septic tank at Leachville. In addition, the applicant seek the following variances. Article 202, section 202.5B and 205, section 205.4C to permit the construction of a 1,540 square foot single family residence in the same approximate footprint as the existing residence and install a new septic tank at Leachville. And last, but certainly not least, article 301, section 301.1D to permit the improvement and replacement of a single family dwelling structure located within 20 feet from the front property line. And to permit the improvement and replacement of a staircase located within 20 feet from the front property line. And to permit the improvement and replacement of a deck located within 20 feet from the front property line.
Good evening, uh.
Good evening. Could you please restate your name for our record?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Justin Passay. I'm a lawyer at DTC Lawyers in Portsmouth. I'm joined tonight by my clients, Ida Jimahern. I also have tonight with me Pete Landry. I guess one piece of housekeeping I'm hoping to just clarify is whether or not, is this a five-member board that are present here? Do you only have four members right now?
That's correct, which means, which means that if you so choose, you could have it continued to next month.
We would like to continue to, to next month, please.
You do, okay. Uh, that is your option, otherwise you only have three of the four, uh, participate. Okay, uh, could, I have a motion, and you do that because you only have four of the five present?
Yeah, yeah, I've, I've, I've wagered that bet before, and you get to a two-two, and the, the fifth person would have been the tiebreaker, and, uh, we just want to be as.
We have to be a three-four, three-one vote in order to proceed.
Right, it's the difference between batting six-hundred and seven-fifty.
Seven-one.
That's right.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion?
All right, I'll move that we, um.
Continue the.
Continue the, uh, hearing.
For two-thirds, three.
Right, can't you, I was just looking.
Yeah. I think it's March 10th.
Yeah, for the, uh, Hearn's property to Third Street until March 10th.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please. And then requested the applicant, of course. Any comments, other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Sorry, this happened.
Thank you very much.
I will be the first one on the agenda for that evening.
I hope they're fine. Thanks very much.
I, I, I don't know. I did not hear from her. I assumed she was coming, so I apologize.
No worries, thank you.
I will, like, check on that for the March 10th.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, the next hearing is on Summit Distributing, uh, tax number R40 lot 15. This is a public hearing where, which is a continuation from January 13th, whereby the applicant seeks special exception to the terms of article 201, section 4E14 of the town of Kingston's Zone Order, and pass that term through to permit a retail holder fuel outlet with a 5,100 square foot convenience store, quick service restaurant, and five vehicles, fewer dispenser irons, 10 heating locations, and three high-speed commercial diesel irons to fewer locations within the Act of Protections District Zone D. I am accusing myself of any further participation in this hearing. There's been all kinds of chitter-chattering, but I've never done anything in the more than 20 years I've served on this board that puts the town of Kingston at risk. And for that reason, in that reason alone, I'm stepping down from hearing this case. Can Mr. Lee Bomar, Vice Chairman, decide?
He's a representative from Summit, present.
What case? We don't, actually, we can't hear you either.
I'm looking for representatives from Summit to present their, uh, proposal, so that you have something to respond to.
Right. Sounds reasonable. When you hear you got it, because nobody hears you, speak up, until they do show.
It's the, the, of course, it's a challenge.
I know, nothing makes it.
What time is scheduled? September 7th.
September. Do you want to read the letter?
I could just read the letters. They're not here. Part of the duration.
You don't have the reading? Uh, well, actually, you know what, yeah, we read people. Really don't think. Go ahead and read the letters.
I would, yeah, it doesn't make sense to do it with three things.
Yeah, it's, uh.
Yeah, Summit's not here, you have to fact that this letter, you have to read the letter.
Go ahead and read it.
All right, on the record, I'll read the letter that we received today. Summit Distributing LLC is appealing the board's December 9th and January 27th decision to the Superior Court. Please accept this cor- correspondence as Summit's motion for a continuance of hearing on Summit's application for special exception scheduled for February 10th. Until, until a future date to be decided by the Superior Court. Specifically, on among other matters, Summit is appealing the board's decision to order a rehearing on Summit's application based on its unreasonable misinterpretation of RSA 676.7, 1N, erroneously concluding that the board was required to supply personal notice of its October 14, 21 hearing on Summit's application to holders of conservation restrictions encumbering CW Station's LLC's property. And which forms the basis for the board's December 9th decision granting CW Station LLC's motion for rehearing and ordering a rehearing on Summit's application. Lastly, please consider this correspondent, correspondence as Summit's request to the board to reconsider and reverse its legally erroneous decision of September 9th and January 27th. No later than February 25th, the board has the inherent authority to reconsider a decision to deny a request for rehearing and order suitable relief upon its own motion or at the, at the request of a party to the underlying proceeding within the 30-day appeal period established under RSA 677.6, 74 Cox Street LLC v. City of Nashua 156, New Hampshire 228, in 2007. Doing so may abrogate Summit's need to pursue a remedy in court. We recommend that you turn a copy of this letter over to the board's legal counsel. If the board has no legal counsel, you may contact me directly to discuss any questions the board might have. Signed by Mark W. Delafour, Forno. Now, since Summit is not here.
Right, I, I, you can put in any comments out there, and then we can discuss.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think the public has a right to respond to what you just read into the record. A lot of people here that came for this notice hearing, and now we have this last-minute request for a continuance. Could I give a response?
Uh, please, sit down, please. God will be here. Put on the microphone. And state your name and address, so, for the record, please.
Good evening, board members. Uh, this is, uh, what else do you have? My name's Chris Twentyarski. I'm attorney for CW Station of the firm of Diva Millman. So this request, I commented this about an hour ago myself. Uh, this is now the third bite of the apple from this applicant. There's nothing new raised in here except the threat of litigation. You can forward that to your counsel, you should. However, everything that's said in there has already been forwarded to your counsel. Your counsel has read that. Now, the board does have the authority, for sure, to grant a continuance for good cause. There's no cause in that, but there's nothing, there's the same title arguments that have been reiterated for now the fourth time. The board cannot just continue to rehear, rehearing decisions over and over again down an endless rabbit hole. We just do this forever. We could do this for years. At, at some point, the, the board has to make a decision here. So I'm sorry, can we all raise hand? What is CW? This is my first time hearing. Sorry, CW Station is in a butter. The what? In a butter property that is next to it. Phil Coombs is the manager. So, at, at some point, the board has to decide whether it's going to continue to indulge these requests in the, in the fear of litigation or not. I, I think realistically, the board must appreciate at this point that there's likely going to be litigation one way or the other. There's not really going to be a way to avoid it, so it would move the board to see its counsel's advice and, and render a decision. Uh, right now, you have a publicly noticed meeting that I think everyone in this room came for. I'm not sure of that, but I think a lot of people are here for that. Um, this is the second time now that they didn't, that the applicant is requesting to just send them home at the last minute. How long is the board going to do it? It's up to you.
I don't disagree with that personally.
It's up to you. I just want that to be.
Just as you said, it should be forwarded to our attorney. I have not heard from him. I know the chairman has, if she heard from him, she hasn't told me. So, I think we have no choice but for this town's protection. Wait till we have an answer from our attorney.
I understand that. I think it makes sense. I guess my question would be, since these things seem to come about two hours before the meeting, is when the next one comes, two hours before the next meeting, do we continue that one again till you get to your attorney, and then we do it again and again, and we keep doing it?
Well, if I read this correctly, if they don't have a decision, they're going to court. So, that's what they said. So, my feeling is, it may be out of our hands.
Okay, fair enough.
I, I will agree with you that this letter does not require us to, uh, continue this motion. However, for the same reason that the first hearing was continued, and because we now are down to three-member board, I think that is sufficient cause to grant the continuation. It's as much our fault as anybody else's. You know, the late arrival of this letter today obviously is, is a factor, but, um, this, this letter doesn't constitute due cause for re.
And we don't need those gases in the air.
However, I, I think that for the same reason we, uh, continued the last one, that it's my opinion that we should both continue this one. So, uh, part of which, we've, I mean, we've already heard testimony from one side, and then I, I think that would just add to, to their argument, uh, for, uh, for the same reason, I would suggest we do not consider the, uh, request to be here, to reheare. Oh, be, sorry, be here, be here, be here. Um, and change your mind, so, because we don't have a full board yet. So, um, unless, anybody else? Sorry, I take any other comments?
You, you're making a vote.
Not yet. Hi, I'm.
Could I add one additional comment shortly?
Mr. Chairman.
If that's okay, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would just say, I, I do agree with you. I agree with everything you said, and the, the only, I don't want to say advice, I would give, but maybe a suggestion is to, in, in speaking with counsel, think about what you might be prepared to do if this happens again at the next one.
Oh, right, okay.
It's, it's, it's an avenue to look into, because it's likely to happen.
Right, however, my guess is that, well, I, I won't go there. Speculation, speculation is never helpful.
All right, thank you for letting us speak. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Is that a motion?
No, it's not yet. I'm, I'm, let you ask and, but.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak at this time?
On the question of, question of granting a continuance on there, not on the.
I've got a quick question. How many times can they bring this to court? How many times can you make a decision?
We're not a court.
Well.
You know, no, they can't.
So.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Ernest Dan Danis, 19 Monroe, Kingston, New Hampshire. When the board makes a decision, how many times can somebody bring that to the board before that decision is known to the board? Five times, six times, twenty times?
It's a good question. They are allowed, there is an, an appeal period after a decision is rendered. If somebody files an appeal, and we are prepared to hear that appeal, then there are two sides, the petitioner and the appellant. And we can have a decision that somebody might not like. A third party can come forward and appeal that decision.
There's nothing written that's saying after three times?
Not, not a high anywhere, right.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I'd like to say something. I looked down the street from Mr. Mike's. If you name it.
Excuse me, put on the microphone, state your name and address.
Kansas Magic, One Hand Road, in Kansas. I looked down the street from Mr. Mike's. Before it was bought out, now that he owns it, he's a great guy. But I got some, some of my property, you don't need, not getting into the details. And you go down 107, there's diesel down there, there's a gas station, we don't need another gas station.
Okay, we're talking right now, excuse me, we're talking now about continuance. If you have something to say relative to the continuance, you're making the argument that if we had both parties here, we could discuss. It's not, it's not appropriate for us to discuss that at this time, I'm sorry.
All right, my name is Rick Ruston. Can you hear? My name, uh, because you got to have to yell, Rick. Well, anyway, my name's Rick Ruston, and I live at the 18 Beach Drive. And I think you ought to, uh, deny the continuance. I think you ought to default the applicant, and I think you ought to, uh, dismiss their application for a special exception with prejudice.
Hi, um, my name is Ashley Hill. I am a住在， resident of Seachold, State of Hampshire. I am currently a resident of Kingston for the last nine years. I also hold a bachelor's degree in environmental science. Um, I am here as a member of a younger generation to protect against building of two gas stations. As you may know, alcohol is an important source of fresh air that can be used in a variety of ways, including agriculture. If we allow this new gas station to be built upon this apple, we're.
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt you.
Sure.
Because we're talking about continuing the hearing, not the arguments against the subject.
Okay. So, can I say, can I run a little bit real quick, though?
Yes.
No.
It has to do with it. I just want you guys to think about for the next meeting, for the next continuance. So, I decided to do a little experiment, because that is what environmental science majors do. So I went to the local gas station where I took photos of the condition of the ground, cracks in the ground, and spillage from these pumps. If you were to go and fill up your tank, how many little droplets of gas do you drop when you pull it out of a car? There is 0.0017 low ounces within a droplet. If you push those droplets, two droplets per every hundred cars that come through, you get about 9.5 pounds of gas needs filled a year. Or, sorry, 10s. In 40 years, you got 283.5.
I, excuse me, I understand what you're driving at, but you're making the argument at the wrong time.
Yes, I understand, sir.
And therefore, I will.
This is a preview. This is a preview. This is just what is mine. Everyone's understanding, but listen.
You're talking to three people. There are two other members of the board that are not sitting here. So it's, you know, all three of us have to wait.
Is this public comment, Rachel?
No.
Has she addressed that during public comment?
There, there's not going to be a hearing. We're going to vote to give them a continuance.
Okay, we're going to vote on whether to do.
On whether to give them a continuance first. Does anybody have anything to say on the continuance? Mr. Cool.
Mr. Chairman, Phil Coombs, Six Dollar Road, uh, I'm just curious what the next step would be. As they have not filed a Superior Court yet, and if this continuance is granted, what would the next step be for this board? Just so that you hear.
Excuse me, at the next meeting, we would hold this rehearing.
And when would that be?
When? The 10th.
Project. What was that appeal?
It would be, it'd be a de novo, as, uh, as it was last time scheduled to be a de novo here. It means we would start from looking at all those represented, uh, all people wouldn't be able to make the case. Um, and my faith is that we will have, I mean, we will ensure that we have a full board, a full five-member board at that time, even if it's a partial off. Um, and, and for that reason, uh, I, I would like to make a motion, not, and as much as I agree with the idea that the, uh, the applicant's in default by not having appeared today, uh, prepared to argue the case, um, in the event that we did not grant a continuance. However, because of the unusual circumstances of having only three people here, uh, I think that's sufficient reason to grant a one-time continuance to March 10th at 7:00 PM uh, for the rehearing that we've already agreed to. And, uh, that's my motion.
Second. Just a half. Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Most in favor of this? The 10th. Thank you all. I'm sorry you had to come through this, uh, but we didn't find out until late.
And, and this will, you will not get a, another, uh, note from your board, you won't get a note from mail. This will be your notice that it's March 10th at 7:00 PM. And my opinion would be that I would be disinclined to continue further.
Why is he going to Superior Court?
It has nothing to do with us. We're not making decisions based on his threat to go to court. And the court wouldn't happen before next March anyway, so.
So the court can't say that it's going to stand on previous decision?
Court, of course not, but everything that wants to decide, that has nothing to do with our decision here. We're only continuing this because we don't have a full board. And fairness to the applicant, as we did to the previous applicant, uh, that's a reason for, uh, for continuation. So, uh, Ellie's giving us the cut signal. We've, uh.
All right, we have another hearing coming up. You're all welcome to stay if you'd like.
I just wanted to make sure that, uh, what you can ask Ellie, because she wants to fill out that letter, if you have counsel. I think, I just want to make sure you can have a copy, if you can.
Thank you. Thank you. I know this isn't easy. Thank you.
That was a quick trip. Yeah, actually. Okay, next continu- I'm going to give you this one. Mr. DeFrain, how are you this evening? Okay, Andy, okay. We're going to ask the media to come to order so we can continue with our third and final hearing. And now all we need is an agenda, and I can keep on there for a second. Okay, great. Yep. Okay. Okay, this is Hoxbridge of South Kingston LLC with Jim DeFrain, tax map R3 lot 4, LU 4020. This is a public hearing whereby the applicant seeks an variance with terms of article 110 section 110.4a of the Town of Kingston zoning ordinance. An asset term being waived to permit construction of 1 age restricted single family residential condominium part of Village of Granitfields condominium to be located within a 1,000-foot setback from Route 125. A 50-foot variance is required. Mr. DeFrain and Mr. Zilch.
Does everybody have plans?
Excuse me?
Plans? Do you have plans?
Do you have the approved site plan?
Excuse me?
Do you have a copy of your approved site plan here?
It's not an approved site plan. We're coming here for...
No, I know, I thought you got my...
Yeah, we may have a couple. If we're going to, if we, should we approve this, then we have several conditions.
Yeah, we'd have to go to site plan approval with the plan.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, without a doubt.
Obviously, maybe you were stuck.
I do appreciate that.
Is it the same rats, Charlie, the same one here?
Excuse me?
Is it the same one?
Yeah, I think so. I think that one has a slightly colored one.
Okay. Proceed.
Good evening. Charlie Zilch from SLC and Associates, here with Jim DeFrain on behalf of Hoxbridge of South Kingston LLC. Obviously, Jim's the owner. This is for a variance request relating to the Village of Granitfields condominium development. The intent of this application is to seek a variance to relocate one of the proposed age restricted, single-family residential units from its current approved location to a new location, as you said, that would be partially within a 1,000-foot setback from Route 125. So that's the intent of the application. I know everybody's quite familiar with Granitfields in its entirety, which is basically a development with five land unit condominium areas. It supports a mix of commercial, recreational, as well as this residential use, all within a commercial three zone. So the entire property is commercial three, about 169 acres. And our focus is on the residential development, and that's on a 17-acre tract in the southeast corner of the entire property, pretty much right along that 1,000-foot setback. So that's the original approved site plan that I've got up on the board, and we'll take a look at that for now. So the community itself consists of 34 residential units, with the majority fully completed at this point. There's a few partially completed, two or three, I think. And then there's a few lots that have yet to be developed. So all of the units are located, like I said, adjacent to or just outside that 1,000-foot residential setback, and that's established from the center line of Route 125. So each unit, it's located on its own limited common area. Remember, this is condominium development. And those little limited common areas allow for a limited amount of private space around each one of the units. So each one has limited common area, and then the rest of the development is common around that. So access is pretty straightforward. It comes in off of Diamond Oaks, turns into Bent Grass, and then you have Mulligan Way coming in off of Bent Grass. So you have a loop road into it and Mulligan off of that. So the subject of the application is focused on basically just one of those units. And this is not constructed, obviously, this is unit 20. If it's, if you look at the tax map, I'm just going to refer to it as unit 20, but on the tax map, it's LU 4020, just so we're clear on that. But I'll just refer to it as 20 to keep it simple here. So as this board, I'm sure as many of the board members on other boards, this is, this particular unit has created a little bit of contention between the planning board and the previous developer, who had elected to move the potential dwelling unit without any planning board approval. So if you look at the board here, this is the original approved site plan, and this was recorded in 2013. Click this around, cat toy here. So that's where unit 20 was supposed to be originally located. There's Bent Grass Circle, Mulligan Way, this is going to be the first unit off of Mulligan Way, and it was going to be placed in front of units 18 and 19. 18 and 19 were going to be served by one single driveway, and kind of wrapped around 20, and 20 was going to be in front of those two units. So you just click to another page here. Right here. So as I said, the previous developer was working on the project, constructing the project. He, he basically built 18 and 19, these two units, first. And what he did is he gave them individual driveways. If you recall, I just showed you that it was supposed to be shared driveway, and it kind of came in right at the intersection of two roadways wrapped around behind 20. So in an effort to not disrupt the driveway going into 18 and 19 here, the driveways, he elected to move it over here. What he did is he basically moved unit 3 over and unit 4 over from the original site plan, sandwiched 20 in there. He did this, this was in 2018, I think, when he did that. So he got started on it. He asked his engineer at the time to report a plan that showed the relocated unit, the land, the LCA areas. And he got started, actually installed the foundation, and Town Cop Windavitt came out and said, wait, you can't do that. You're way off plan. You can't just move one unit from one street over to here. So they gave him a cease and desist and asked him to remove that foundation, which was eventually removed. So once they started looking at the development, they noticed there were some other problems in relation to drainage, and a lot of things that didn't get constructed properly by the previous developer. So now Jim has taken over as a project developer that previous developer is no longer involved. And Jim has worked hard, and I've worked with him over the last couple of years now to try and rectify a lot of those problems. So he started off first with all the drainage issues. And Jim's spent a lot of time, effort, and energy, and has gone in there with the approval of the planning board, working with the town's agents, and taking care of a lot of those problems. I think he's pretty much done with the exception of just finding a little pavement out there. So now that he's taken care of the drainage issues, worked all through that, he wants to turn his attention to this issue here. And so we kind of kicked around some ideas on it, and one of the ideas that we came up with, rather than trying to put it back or seek approval to put it back in this location here, which seems to upset everybody, and it kind of blocked off access to the two shared leach fields, there's two leach fields right in here, and this would be your access into it, so it blocked that, so it's not really a good location for it. So Jim came up with an idea, and I think it's a great idea. I'll show you what it is. This is a bit larger scale, so just kind of adjust to that. So what he wanted to do to address that is basically, this is Bent Grass Circle here, the lower portion of it, and there's Mulligan Way coming down here. This is the original location where 20 is supposed to be, there's 18 and 19, like I showed you on that original plan, is basically take that unit and the limited common area associated with it, bring it over here. This is the 1,000-foot setback. That's unit number 34. And place it right here. Now, when you come into development, and I drove over there after you kind of pitched this idea to me, one of the first few units you see is up here off of Bent Grass Circle. So where this location is, actually looks like it's further away from 125 than the first few units that you encounter when you come in there. And then the next thing I noticed is that all the infrastructure is right there and readily available to hook this up. So you, this would, if you put this unit 20 tied into the leach field line here, you'll be tied into the same system that it was tied into originally. This location over here is going to be the same leach field over here. So that works. There's a water line right here. If you come in, tap into that water line, you have water service. And the driveway location's fine, you have great site distance from there, the road's relatively flat, so there's really no issue with anywhere having a driveway on that. So that's what Jim would like to do, but obviously, the one issue we have is that it's just inside of the 1,000-foot setback. We're about 950 feet from the center line of Route 125. So I thought it's a good way to address a problem, a longstanding problem. It doesn't seem to adversely affect anybody here. It'll look just like it's part of the development or meant to be part of this development. And I'd be, I'd find it'd be difficult to discern where that 1,000-foot setback, I don't think you'd be able to tell, that this one, it certainly wouldn't look like it's within a 1,000-foot setback. It wouldn't look odd compared to the location of the other ones. Because the way Bent Grass Circle comes down, kind of on an angle, in an opposite angle to where that setback is. Like I said, these units are the first ones that you would encounter as you came into development. So I think it's a good solution. Obviously, we need relief from the zoning board to do this, because it is a residential setback from 125, and we're right at that point. Do keep in mind, we were here just the other year, and we were granted an approval for the veteran apartment, or the veteran condominiums and the clubhouse, and that was about 700 feet from there. So we have a nice transition. The more general commercial is close to 125 as intended by this ordinance, and then it transitions to the recreational with a mix of the condominium for the veterans, and then you have this age restricted development beyond that. So they seem to buffer and blend from one to another fairly well. So any questions on the request?
Charlie, Charlie, how many units are, are approved, currently approved, amended site plan?
There's 34 in total.
That were approved?
That are approved, yes.
That includes this number 20?
This would be 34, yes. Yeah. If this is the last one built, this would be the third or fourth unit.
Yeah, it clears up all the issues on number 20, where it was going to be located by moving it here.
However, in the planning board, in order to get that approval, number 20 was removed from the plan, not just moved, it was removed. And the approval, and I believe that the Selector asked for clarification on this when they received it, that the approved site plan is for 33 units. So this isn't a matter of moving it. This location here that it showed, removed from, it never got built and it was never approved. The whole question about Bent Grass Circle and providing an access, trying to fit that another unit in there, was disallowed, so that there was one unit removed from the site, to, I believe, your site plan, current planned site plan. And I think two Selectors can, can probably concur on this, that the approved site plan is for 33 units.
What site plan are you referring to?
The amended site plan that's approved by the planning board that is currently determined as site. Not that it's a plan that you submitted that says 2013. We're talking about the plan that, where during the planning board meeting, you, in order to get approval, you said that unit 20 was removed.
They didn't want to show unit 20 on the plan set. There's a big difference. There's a big difference. I never agreed to lowering the unit total in this. I just agreed to take unit 20 off of that plan set. And that plan set, that the most recently approved site plan, amended site plan, was for road drainage and road construction.
It's, it's...
It specifically says that on the site plan.
You have to show the unit that it proposes to be built. It's not just drainage. In other words, the site plan is a site plan, but what you're working with is the most recent site plan. It's not the 2013 site plan, the 2018 site plan. It's, the site plan is approved, it's not the most recent. And that will delineate the number of units. So this is in addition to the units approved in the amended site plan. This is not just a sort of floating unit that's looking for a place to call home and apparently didn't find it because it's off the lot. There is no approval in the site plan for the third or fourth unit. I disagree. Okay. Well, I believe that we sent, and I think if you want to ask the Selector and the other Selectors here, he was instrumental in getting that.
Yeah. Because it's my understanding, I mean, speaking with Robert Stewart, a building inspector, it's my understanding that approving the location of this number 20, or 1020, whatever it is, cleans up all the issues with the development. It's my guess. I mean, it needs some, it needs to be, they still need an amended site plan approved by the planning board. They do need that, and they do need to...
No, I'm not talking about what this adding of the unit would be. I'm talking about the current amended site plan. The current site plan has been approved.
Richard, is there any way you could help us with this here? I don't understand what Peter's going with it, because we're getting two different signals here.
I'm not sure how I want to answer this, but the original plan, 34 houses. Then when all the shifting and everything happened, there were 33. But I think the plan was still for 34 houses, it just didn't show the 34 site, because they're trying to decide where to put it.
Because of the driveway that went through, it didn't allow...
Because of the driveway, and, you know, one plan showed it in front of the two houses.
Right.
And this seemed like the best solution to where it should go.
Well, the question is then, what was the document that was approved that the planning board felt that you requested from the Selector?
We requested them to put 33 houses on that and ask for it, which they did not do. The plan still said 34 houses and showed 33. And the reason was they, I mean, I'm guessing, speculating that they were coming back with this, you know, plan, and they know that if this plan goes through, they have to go for site plan review to get it approved. But the planning board still, this is just a variance to see whether or not to allow it in that setback area.
Does that make sense, Peter?
So basically, you wrote a decision about whether 34 houses can be allowed...
They need to get the 34th house, but if they get it, then the 50-foot variance is what they would need to locate it in that spot on the property.
That's right.
Right. But it would require a hardship, other than a hardship created by the applicant, or the applicant's...
Well, there's a couple of ways of looking at that. Is it a hardship on the applicant, or would it be a hardship on the current owners to have it put in some of the other places? Is this the best solution? You know, so this, this may put less impact on the current property owners. But I know, I'll give you the opinion.
Our decision is to whether the house...
Whether or not the 50...
Build residence, I'll, I'll build residence.
But I'm, I'm, this is what, just like the other things we've talked about, this is here relevant to us, to whether, if we approve the fact that they can build a house, put a house there, and he has to go back to the planning board, and the planning board says, no, you can't. That's the planning board's problem. But, you know, we're not here to, to, in my opinion, decide or say, oh, geez, you can't do it because the planning board thinks you might have 33, 34 houses on the property.
But the plan, how many houses were shown on the current plan?
That plan, like I said, the intent of that plan, it says it clearly on that plan, that plan is to replace the drainage and grading plan that was within the original plan set, the 2013 plan set. That plan's purely for revising and fixing the drainage out there. And this did come up during the TRC, we had TRC prior to going to planning board, and it came up about the unit 20 and its, you know, issues that it has that's associated with unit 20. And it was requested that I just don't show unit 20 on there. It was never asked of me to go from 34 to 33 units. Jim would never agree to that. He would never agree to that. So I know I didn't comply with that. I did comply with the request to take unit 20 off of that, because the planning board said they didn't want to approve the location of it. And I said, that's fine, because as far as I'm concerned, what they're approving is only the drainage and roadway construction. That was it. And that's what that plan says. That plan's not a recorded plan either. It's a plan that's supposed to take place, or replace the sheets within the original plan set for the roadway construction. Says it right on.
My, my guess, I, my guess is that we would need to evaluate this entirely on whether having, when this, when this condominium was built, the applicant requested the 1,000-foot setback. And it seemed reasonable, it was passed, before my time, whatever. I don't have a problem with that, housing, whatever. So this is a commercial zone. So I guess it is, we need to evaluate it based on criteria for a variance on whether there's a valid reason for creating a new structure outside of a residential... on whether there's a valid reason for creating a new structure outside of a residential, new residential structure outside of it. So I guess we probably need to go to the criteria. Charlie, and have anything to explain how that would work? Because this certainly is not granted by any means.
And nor are they stating that, if I'm correct, Peter. They're right. All they're doing, from what I get, when I talk with Robert about, they're moving that house that couldn't go in between eighteen and nineteen over there. They want to move it. It's not done. It's not built. And the only way they can locate it on this section of the property is if we grant a fifty-foot variance. Now, they still have to get an amended site plan approved by the planning board. That'll be, the approval, if we agree to the variance, that's going to be part of the approval. And they also will need to revise condo docs for this unit and location to reflect that.
I don't think the condo docs will probably have arguments specific to any...
You got this from the planning board, so that's why I thought I'd add it in.
Yeah.
It doesn't, but technically, from our perspective, it really doesn't.
The restrictions run along units and targets and where they're going.
And we know it's an age-restricted property anyways. It's designated age-restricted.
Yes.
And so we have to make, and the application reflects that. And so the notice of decision will have to reflect that as well.
Right, that's, that's all the unit is, but I just see how...
I was remiss in not saying to you that you had an opportunity to defer this case because there's only four of us instead of five. So, and I apologize, I should have said that earlier when we started the hearing. Since that's an issue, we can't continue without prejudice to the next meeting. Up to you.
You want to continue?
It still needs three of the four of us to agree. Just, I just want to be sure you knew that going into the phrase, I was speaking. Comments from the board? Are there any comments from the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Yes, sir, could you come to the microphone?
My name is John Scott, and I am on the board of your board. And I am against any changes being approved. I do take exception to his description of the previous developer and the new developer. My paperwork is sound by the previous in, so that's a misconception. This person developing out does have all the knowledge of what went on in before. Variants, variants, this is not done exactly right, that's not done exactly right. Building things even when they're told not to do it by the time, like, more than one year. So this goes on and on and on for us. So, in my opinion, we've had enough variants, there's enough change in things. I bought, I've been there for six years, I bought into what I bought into. If they can just really, really change things around, that's not what I paid for them. I don't even have a pay drive because of all this. So I am against any allowing further ones to be out there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to comment? Yes, ma'am, come to the microphone.
Holly Bullyard, six bent grass circle. Is the parcel of land that Jim and Frank would like to move, number twenty-two, owned by Jim? Is it owned by Jim, or is it owned by the...
HOA.
The HOA?
Hawksbridge South Kingston.
The LLC, it's owned by the LLC.
Okay, okay. I'd like to question that a little bit.
Okay.
My name is Renee Spital. I live at the Publican Way. And if you look at our condo docs, our condo docs say that each house has their limited common area, and the association owns and manages all the common area in our complete land unit, which is land unit five. Okay, where all the residential homes are. So the common area is owned and managed by the association based upon our condo documents. And our association manages the common areas. So I'm not quite sure how this works because the association owns, is responsible and owns all of the land unit of five. If you look at the condo docs, it's where this stays.
So are you saying that the condo association owns the land that's being proposed to locate this thirty-four house?
That's my take on it, yes, based upon our legal documents.
Yeah, well, let's see if we can find an answer to that. Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
The other question I have, Janine, which septic system, not Leachville, the septic system is going to attach to?
Melvin.
It's going to attach to Melvin Way, where it was going to before?
Yes.
Okay, so is that where all the houses alone, that part of bent grass where yours is gathered, why not? Do they all hook to Melvin Way?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so it wouldn't go into the bent grass, which we're already having trouble with. Okay. I guess, do you have any more questions?
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Oh, could I just make one comment? The limited common area that we would be giving up becomes common area. It's just merely a trade-off. Limited common area moves from one place to another, the common area now becomes where the unit was. So it doesn't really affect the common area, it's still the same area in total.
Does the square footage stay the same, Joe?
Relatively the same, yes.
I can understand the exchange piece of it. The question I would have is, since the association owns the common land, shouldn't there be a requirement that the members of the association, the owners, have to buy into this in total? So the ownership would have to take a vote to say, are we in favor of moving forward? Would not logically be...
I understand.
Are you asking if the association would be, has the right to vote on whether to locate the twentieth house in that spot?
Yes, that's what I mean.
I don't know.
Because that's the way the association should not...
That would be a question that you would ask your attorney.
Right, and we are going to, but that's the way the association documents, that's the only question I have. I just want to make that aware, that who think that maybe the association should have a say in this?
And that may be appropriate, and again, I don't know for a fact it may be appropriate to the planning board because the only thing, the house has not been built.
Right.
If they get approval through the planning board, then they would need this variance. If they don't, if we grant the variance, then the house may never be built.
No, I understand, okay, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Can I help you on the common area, limited common area a little bit?
Sure.
Land unit thirty-five is owned by Hawksbridge. Hawksbridge pays taxes on the limited common area. It's not common area.
This parcel is not common area?
Land unit thirty-five, you have a tax code there for land unit thirty-five that Hawksbridge gets built from. Hawksbridge owns land unit thirty-five.
Then how does the land unit, we're supposed to be responsible for the entire land unit. So how can we have a parcel of land...
Have you paid the taxes on land unit thirty-five?
I think, I think we're getting far afield here.
All right, thank you.
We are getting a little far afield. So that needs to be settled, I'm sure, but your perspective is...
One more question.
Could you come to the microphone, please? I'm sorry, it's hard to hear.
One last question, then. Can you authorize or create, allow for variance on, like, if I came to you and said I want variance on property that I don't have the right to do that, could you do it anyway? If I just had that, that said that?
We can grant a variance in...
If I made a statement and said, I want to do this, you're going to, I may or may not own that property, you're going to allow that?
He's telling us...
Hawksbridge owns land unit thirty-five.
He's telling us that he owns the property.
But that's not the question to ask. I'll just ask him, as a general principle. If I came to you and I misrepresented myself, and you found out later, if you thought in good standing that I was telling the truth, but you found out later, I never found out later that it was not true, do you rehold that, or is that just a go?
I'm not sure how exactly that works, but when we get an application, one of the things that individuals have to provide is either be the owner of record attending here or provide authorization from the owner of record. And so when we get an application, it's the owner of record or permission from the owner of record to come before us. So unless there's something wrong with the owner of record on that property files, or...
So being a condominium, everyone owns the common property.
Not the limited common area.
Okay, you guys need to figure that out.
I think it's pretty simple, Susan can ask the tax code tomorrow. Who the owner of land unit thirty-five is, and it should be told who the land unit owner is.
I don't understand the difference between lot twenty and land unit thirty-five.
I'm sorry?
You're saying that land unit thirty-five, but this is, but this is for, oh, that's where the new location is for twenty?
Yes.
Now, does that, land unit thirty-five, since you're only thirty-four land units proposed, does that appear on the plot on the tax map anywhere? You, it's not land unit thirty-five, you only proposed thirty-four land units. Where'd you come up with land unit thirty-five, is that...
It's on the point, it's on the sign, the name, about the point.
Land unit thirty-five is, is that the part that's outlined?
That's where it shows you, proposed clubhouse, that has not been built.
It's not, it's not one of the residential units, the clubhouse.
Oh, clubhouse?
Yes.
Is land unit thirty-five, is that what, so what's the proposed commercial office space that's adjacent to this proposed unit twenty?
I don't think we're here for a proposed office space.
You have it on the map here, proposed commercial office space.
I'm sorry, what?
In this common area, this is all land unit four.
Exactly, limited common area?
No, just common area.
I think it's limited common area.
Uh, it says on the map it's common, so I'm just using, stating what appears on your chart.
I think we're here for variance for the house. I think the two are...
I know, but it's...
I'm asking you what's adjacent to this land that you're proposing to use for a house, a residence, and you have a proposed commercial office space. What's the distance from your house to the proposed commercial office space?
I don't see proposed commercial, but what is...
You see the little lots instead of...
Oh, over here, okay, I got it. It's over here.
The adjacent lot, what's the distance from your commercial office space to your proposed unit twenty residential?
It's this space here, yeah.
Up to two hundred feet between the two.
Those same houses, expecting to be wired, it's all on. Does it look like... It's fifty feet over the line.
Again, we're not going to hear you unless you come to the microphone, I'm sorry. We are taping, so it goes, you know, you watch on YouTube tomorrow.
At time, February, the end, I was on, you want to go? I'm trying to understand the relationship between, are we fifty feet over the line and that fifty feet is the width of the house?
The fifty feet, what, the variance is for, the house has to be a thousand feet from 125. It's actually nine hundred fifty feet from 125, so they need a fifty-foot variance.
Okay, so that's the fifty feet of the width of the house.
The width of the house is five, two feet.
It's forty-two.
Okay.
So you're saying from here, where's another building?
Wait there.
This one?
Yep.
Okay, so forty-five, it might be under. Where's the variance, beans, variance, construction?
It's quite a ways away, probably three, four hundred feet or so, at least.
Is this 125 up here?
Nope, we got it, well along the...
And who determines that thousand feet? That it was a program to keep thousand feet?
It's the ordinance, yeah.
It's the ordinance.
Yes, ma'am?
I do have one question. That whole commercial office space, we are not in favor of that. That's on our land unit, which is a residential-only land unit.
But that's not up for an option tonight. I appreciate your comments, and I thank you for them, but that's not up for discussion, there are no permits ever to...
And that is not being considered?
Not tonight, it's not, absolutely not. I can't tell you what's being considered down the road. As far as we're concerned, it's not on the table.
Just the house?
Just the house.
No. We have to meet criteria with all the owners present?
Yes.
All right, so let's...
So I assume you're ready to go through the criteria?
Unless Mrs. Hill has it already done.
Well, he has it done in the package, he did.
Okay, nice.
Yes.
Would you like me to go through the criteria?
Yeah, would you please, that would be great.
Sure. So the variance request, as you said, is to allow the one particular unit to be nine hundred and fifty feet from the centerline 125, whereas the setback is a thousand feet. So the criteria, there's five, and I'll go through them one by one. Number one, the proposed variance will not be contrary to the public interest because my response for you is that the proposed location of the relocated unit is in an area that would appear to be within the planned development. Access to the community water system and septic system is close by and can be tied to without interruption to existing occupants. There is an available location for the driveway where ample site distance exists to ensure that this proposed unit will not create an unsafe or disruptive access. The supporting LCA area can be dedicated to the unit, will not encroach upon the abutting unit or the potential community center in its parking. And all granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Second criteria, the spirit and the intent of the ordinance is preserved because, and my response is that this zone allows for age-restricted residential use within the restriction that has to be set back a thousand feet from the centerline Route 125. The thousand-foot setback from 125 is likely meant to maintain a commercial corridor along the highway. Considering this developed site, the existing commercial uses, contractors' yard, proposed commercial condominiums, indoor recreation building, and golf clubhouse achieve that goal.
Can you say something?
Excuse me?
What makes this property special is that there is a transitioning from purely commercial uses located close to Route 125 to recreational uses with an approved by variance seven-unit age-restricted veterans condominiums closer to the one-thousand-foot setback. Allowing this one unit to be located just within the thousand-foot setback maintains that uniqueness. Granting the variance preserves the intent of the ordinance where it allows flexibility in how a property can be maintained, or managed, to transition from one use to another with consideration given to the intensity of the uses. So again, speaking about the commercial close to 125 and as it transitions to this residential. Number three, there is substantial justice in granting the variance because, and the response we offered is, granting the variance will allow for resolution to a longstanding conflict created by the previous developer. This will allow for the current developer to move forward with finalizing construction within the development so that the community can fully enjoy the neighborhood as intended. The request will not adversely affect the existing development, but will only enhance it. Number four, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished because, and the response is that the existing development was designed and approved to support thirty-four total age-restricted single-family condominium units. Relocating one unit to this location and abandoning its previous location ensures that the unit total remains thirty-four. The unit to be constructed in the requested location shall be in keeping with all the previously constructed homes. It will enhance the value of the community. The area in which this home is to be constructed, adjacent to LCA thirty-four, will meld with the existing development. Although the unit is proposed within the thousand-foot setback, it would not be discernible due to the orientation of the development and the roadway that serves it, meaning that this unit, once constructed, will not be the first unit that you would encounter as you enter the neighborhood, where units nine and eight and one preceded on the left side of the roadway. And as such, the thousand-foot setback would be indeterminable. Granting of the variance to allow the unit to be relocated to an area that maintains continuity with all of the homes and allows for the final completion of the development would only enhance the surrounding property values. And lastly, number five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. And our response is that the intent of the setback is to maintain a demarcation of a thousand feet from the centerline of Route 125 between commercial uses and age-restricted residential housing. The idea is to limit use along the highway to commercial as the highest and best use for such corridor. for such corridor. In this particular case, the property has supported both commercial and residential uses within the same project, and each has benefited from each other. Both access from the same roadway, uh, both access from the same roadway utilize and share much of the same infrastructure and both are fully utilized without conflict. This request to allow just one of the age-restricted single-family condominium units to be just inside the setback does not adversely affect the intent of the ordinance as demonstrated. Denial of request results in unnecessary hardship where it forces the developer to construct a dwelling in a location originally approved but now partially occupied by a community member.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Gentlemen, you ready for the?
Um, just before the last statement you made, that we were forced to develop a condominium where it originally approved, that approval was rescinded. By who? By the planning board? I don't think so. I can guarantee it, but, um, and agreed to by the applicant. So it can't go back to nineteen twenty, eighteen, between eighteen and nineteen. First stop is on, right on the driveway. And so, um, that was the reason why the C C D S disorder was put in and was the reason why we spent many, many months with the previous engineer of, when he was saying, we'll do a NAS build, and we get it done, the planning board say, yeah, you need to produce a plan. Plan was finally produced, which allowed the septic system to go in there and access to the septic system for maintenance. And so that's why it couldn't go to Bent Grass Circle anymore. And the final approval from the planning board was for the units, um, that exist on the approved plan, which doesn't include this one. And, uh, to go back to your, your previous plan that required amended site plan is not possible because that was disapproved, you had an amended site plan, we took that out. Um, and so, uh, saying that you can go back and follow up previously approved site plan that was denied, and it's likely an issue of C C D S disorder on, because it wasn't followed, uh, wouldn't be possible, so, um, I'm just getting, I, I really don't understand how you can, um, you can claim that you would be forced to build it in, between eighteen and nineteen.
Again, again, that, that last site plan, that amended site plan was a drainage plan. That was the intent of it, that's why you got to take our TRC, uh, together, condominium association owners, to get that addressed. It was never about the units, the unit location, all it was, was for, is for to address the drainage of the development.
I haven't.
And I know that I was asked to, to take twenty off the plan, don't show it, because the planning board, when they approved the drainage, they didn't want to get caught up with the twenty, with lot twenty. They didn't want to say that if they approved the plan, then showed it in that particular place, they'd go ahead and build it. That's all I complied with. We never, ever agreed to say that we're going to be less than thirty-four units, never agreed to that. And it's not on that list. Still says thirty-four units on that plan.
May I ask a question? Do, do you believe that if this is approved for variance, fifty-foot variance, your next stop is the planning board?
Yes. And also, one other thing too, is we've just submitted a plan to the planning board to address where unit four got relocated to. Okay, those limited common areas got moved around a little bit when twenty got put in there, those buildings got moved, a couple were built, those limited common areas got moved, so we just submitted a plan to go in there to get that addressed as well. And then in between unit three and four, where twenty had been moved to temporarily before it was, uh, disallowed, we're showing now a twenty-five-foot-wide access easement. So twenty can go back in that spot once the planning board approves that one. This is a great location for unit twenty, it resolves a lot of issues.
That's fine. Our concern is the fifty-foot variance you've asked for here.
Yes.
If we grant it, you go from here to the planning board and you'll run into Mr. Clatten and you better be prepared for it.
Well, I'm not the only one who's kind of all of a sudden, I do know what we proved, and I do know that it is involved with house locations. So anyways, anyways, okay, we're not going to, we're not going to debate that right now.
The, what I am going to bring up is the definition of unnecessary hardship from RSA six seventy-four thirty-three. For purposes of this subparagraf, unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the speci- specific application of that provision to the property referred to as, uh, relationship test. So what is there unique to this property, unlike all the other ones in that development or in that area, that would create an unnecessary hardship?
I've already, I already stated, it's, the uniqueness of the property is that in entirety has commercial development in the corridor, right on the one twenty-five corridor, it transitioned into a recreational use and then into a residential use. It's unique, there's only one property like that that I know of in Kingston that has all those elements, all in one piece of property, shouldn't be a hard line of a thousand-foot setback, doesn't really make any difference, and that's what makes the property unique.
Land unit thirty-five and land unit thirty-four, is that what, what makes it, what makes the other land units not?
You'll ask me on that.
What makes land unit thirty-five, which is the one you're proposing to, to be outside the setback, uh, what makes that land unit unique from all the other land units?
Well, I don't think the, the focus isn't on what makes the unit unique, it's what makes the property unique.
Okay, pointing out that that's the definition of hardship and, uh...
And I think we need.
It is subject to interpretation, it's phenomenal.
Yes, but that's why they went back and redefined it for us.
I'm assuming you're ready for the, uh, right here, but, okay. I'm, I'm just going to do it properly, as my gentlemen, I think that's worked out well for us, and it's clear how we vote and so forth. The first one is, uh, will there be a diminu- diminution in, um, okay. Will there be a diminution of value surrounding properties as a result of granting this variance? Excuse me. Yes or no? Yes? No?
I don't see it.
No? No, all the way around, okay, so that passes. Number two, will the granting of this variance be of benefit to the public interest?
I'd say no, I'd say maybe, we thought we had our members of the public from the area and they're opposed to it, so I'd say no.
I, I'm going to say yes because I think overall this project has been a long time in the works and I think it's come to one of the best points it's been in a long time.
Yes.
I agree.
So it's three to two, three to one, excuse me, but it does pass. Number three, will literal enforcement result in unnecessary hardship? I think it will because I think it's going to be hard to find another spot on the project plan to locate this unit.
I, I, again, saying no.
Yes.
Yes.
So three, one again, and that also passes. Number four, will substantial justice be done if this variance is granted? Last one?
Yes.
Two?
Hmm, I think so. I, I should, I'm going to say yes, just because, uh, I can't think of the basic argument to make the point.
Okay. And number five, will the use contemplated by the petition result in, uh, in result of retaining this variance be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance?
I can't. And I think so, and I think that the other setback was requested by the applicant in the first place and, um, to be able to, anyways.
So the answer's no for you as well, and so it's four, one, four zero. So all five criteria pass.
No, I said that, um...
They passed, and you would, said no on two.
What was the question last?
The last one was, uh, is?
Substantial justice? No.
No, that's, will it be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance?
And I said, I said yes, because the ordinance defined that setback for a reason.
Okay.
And if you just keep chiseling away, it's going to move the ordinance.
So it's three, one, and that one as well. Okay, now I'd like the motion.
Another motion, we grant the variance, we grant the.
Grant fifty-foot variance.
Fifty-foot variance.
For an age-restricted, single-family home.
On, attached map on three lot four, no U four oh two oh.
Okay, so one condition is that the amended site plan must be approved by the planning board. Okay, Peter, I'll set, they needed a conditional on the amended site plan being approved by the planning board.
Yeah, so, um...
You need site, they need site plan approved by the planning board.
Obviously, yeah, that, but, um, you're, I'm just looking at the distance here. Okay, looks like it's about ten feet, so to the end, end of the corner of the property, so.
All right, that's good. Okay, all those, give a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
All right.
That was, is that the only condition?
Yeah, the only condition, yeah, the condo docs will come out with the planning board.
That would be mentioned.
Yeah, the amended site plan.
Any amended site plan, you're not going to continue on. Okay, so I have yes, I checked myself, and you say no, so three, one again. So yes, the variance has been granted for the fifty-foot, uh, setback. Thirty days before it can be appealed by anyone that would come up with some information and I'll have a letter, notice of decision on beginning of the week. Thank you very much. Is there any other business to come before us this evening? Okay, and tonight, anyone, uh, February twenty-fourth, seven o'clock, here, how many your contestants, contestants? Okay, the meeting is in January twenty-five, unless you get some business?
No, no, this is just a technical question, um, March tenth.